He just sounds pretty weak.
Welcome to the February nineteenth West Fargo City Commission meeting. We've got Mayor Mattern on the phone with us tonight, Mayor.
Well, good evening, everyone. Sorry I couldn't be there with you tonight, but in the capable hands of Commissioner Wentz. Also, before I turn over the gavel to Commissioner Wentz, I'd like to congratulate everybody that was involved in working with fire yesterday. That was a great team effort. It was just very professionally done and a big congratulations to everyone. And with that, I'm going to turn the gavel over to Commissioner Wentz.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any bounds.
All right, next, approval of the order of the agenda. We've got two additions to the consent agenda. I think that's all we have, right?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Next is the approval of the minutes from February fifth, twenty eighteen, meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, we got a little delay. All right. We'll move on to looking at the building permits. All right, any questions on building permits? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, motion passes. Onto the regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda, request for parking reduction for Rusted Center. Tim.
Thank you, Commissioner Wentz. This request is coming from the Park District. If you're not aware, you may apply for a reduction to parking to be approved by resolution by the City Commission. And in this case, the Park District is looking at a major expansion to the Rusted Center. They plan to add turf space within there, as well as a couple of party rooms. They have not put this project out for bid yet, however, they're looking at doing this request prior to doing so because if there's a change, then they need to know it before they put the full site out for bid. As we look at it, we tend to look to the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual, and it's difficult in this case because we're looking at a field that has basically a programmed use in it, and so there's not a lot of spectators, and so it's not the typical, like, event center that you'd have. So, we've received some letters from the Park District, as well as their neighboring property owners stating that they're acceptable to having a shared parking agreement. So what we're looking at as a recommended action by the Commission is to approve the reduction of parking with a condition that if additional parking is needed, that that would be something the City Commission would review and require at a later date. I think there's space on the site for more parking if they need it, and of course, if they feel they need it, they're probably going to go after it. The problem is, I just want to make sure that it's something that City Commission can review because the overflow would probably be a nuisance to the adjacent neighborhood. So, Jim Cole from Zerberg Architects, who's designed the site, is here and available for any questions if you have him, as am I.
All right, any questions to Tim? It's on the packet that they do have some signed agreements with neighbors if needed
Yes.
For the weekend use of lots.
So, right now, I have agreements from Weck Health across the street, Freedom Elementary to the west. The park, the school district said, coordinate that with the school itself. They've also said that they have a verbal agreement with the church to the east. And there is a good amount of overflow parking on Seventh Street. That street was designed with sort of that cut-in, with some parking on the street there as well.
Any other questions? Comment?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, motion passes. Next on the agenda is a planned unit development agreement for Medical Center. Tim.
Thank you, Commissioner Wentz. Just going to pull up the site plan so you can see this as I talk about it. This application was received in order to accommodate a change to what we had previously approved for a new PUD at Sanford site. That site was approved but not completed. They changed their plans a bit to completely remodel, or to completely build a new clinic in one phase right next to the existing clinic. After completion of that new building, they would propose to tear down the existing building and replace it with a parking lot. The new site plan shows a two-story structure, meeting the district requirements set forth in the redevelopment overlay district for which Cheyenne Street is part of. We've looked at this site in previous iterations, and we're carrying on our reminder that Thirteenth Avenue may be changed in the future, so the access that they have to the site may be altered, and we want to make sure that they're aware of that. We also would note that they intend to do a monument and a wall sign. We're recommending that this approval includes regulation of signage of the commercial office park district. The underlying land use that we look at here is office parks, so that would make sense. At the February twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the application with the three conditions noted in the staff report. We also included some discussion on the parking requirements here. Our current parking requirements would call for about a hundred and fifty-plus spaces. I say plus because it would also include employees at their largest shift. However, if we look at that IT manual I referred to before, it would be more appropriate to do one space per two hundred square feet with a parking requirement of a hundred and thirty-two spaces. They're providing a hundred and forty-seven. So along with the approval tonight, I'm asking for, as well, similar to the last request, a resolution for a parking reduction. I would say, just in addition to that, that the city currently is looking at our parking regulations. We're involved with the study with the City of Fargo. Some of our parking regulations may be a little heavy. The idea here is making sure that they're efficient with their land use, as well as, you know, kind of protecting ourselves to make sure that they're not overflowing into the neighboring property. But we feel that a hundred and forty-seven spaces is enough, and Sanford has expressed at the public hearing at Planning Commission and in meetings with staff that they believe that that's enough as well. So, we're recommending approval of that resolution, along with the staff, or the Planning Commission recommendation for approval of the PUD. I'm available for any questions. There is no public hearing scheduled, but Sanford is here and available for any questions if you have them.
All right, thanks, Tim. Any questions? Tim Dent cover?
Building.
Really nice building. Yeah, it'd be a real nice addition.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, motion passes. Onto the third item on the agenda, request for a conditional use permit for home occupational, home occupation hair salon. Tim.
Thank you, Commissioner Wentz. We received this application to accommodate the ability, the applicant to run a home-based occupation, which has customers coming to the site. We have some regulations for home-based occupations, and one of those is that if you have customers coming to the site, it needs to be reviewed as a conditional use. The applicant currently operates a hair salon in rented space in Fargo, but she is looking to retrofit space in her home. She runs this business by appointment only. The applicant here does not intend to change the outward appearance of the home to reflect the business. They are also able to provide adequate parking for the home and for the business. In regards to the criteria we use for granting a conditional use, we have no concerns. Property owners within three hundred and fifty feet were notified, no comments have been received to date. At the February twelfth meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the application based on the conditions listed in the staff report, as well as adding an additional condition to release the conditional use based on when this property is sold. We kind of copied some of the language from our previous conditional uses and put that into the conditional use permit and kind of altered that language a little bit, just to state that the conditional use permit may be brought for review or revocation if rights to the property are sold, conveyed or otherwise transferred, or if four or more complaints are received within sixty days. So, I like that language a little bit better than what the Planning Commission provided. We've used it before, and I want to keep some consistency. So, I'd kind of alter their recommendation if I could to include that language, which I just stated.
Okay.
I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Any questions to Tim? One customer at a time, so basically, we got two parking spaces in the driveway.
Yeah, so they, if they had somebody kind of overlapping, they'd have space for it, so...
Anything else, or what are our wishes?
Make a motion to approve with the conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Onto the next item on the agenda, request for a conditional use permit for accessory building. Tim.
Thank you, Commissioner Wentz. We received this application to accommodate the construction of an oversized accessory building. This is the rural residential district, and within there, we permit accessory buildings up to sixteen hundred square feet. They allow greater than that as a conditional use, provided they are in characteristic development patterns of the subdivision. In this particular subdivision, we have approved greater than four thousand square feet. This one is planned to be built at thirty-eight seventy-two square feet, and it is intended to match the primary residential structure. In the staff report, I have a site plan. They're going to take down some of these temporary structures he has on the site and put this in its place. It's going to really clean it up. They have horses. And one good thing about this applicant that I talked to, he's really trying to preserve the open space on there. If they have to re-subdivide this in the future, it's one of those larger Nelson acre lots. He's trying to keep it all close to the house, so, well done by them. I also note, when I talk to people that are doing such a large structure, that they recognize in the conditional use permit that home occupations have some specific standards, although he has no intention of doing that. If he sells the property someday, I want to make sure they understand that because these are some pretty big buildings. So, within, with that, the criteria we look at for granting a conditional use, no concerns, property owners within three hundred and fifty feet were notified, and we received no comments. At the February twelfth meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission forward, is forward, hereby forwarding their recommendation for approval with the conditions noted in the staff report. I'm available for any questions. The applicant is here as well.
Any questions to Tim? All right, no questions? Those are wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the first reading of zoning ordinance amendment to section four point, four dash four-three-one, and Mike will abstain from this. Tim, you can't leave us yet.
It's you, Tim.
Didn't have that folder in front of me.
The meeting is about you, Tim.
So, these are amendments that we identified because, well, there's two amendments within this. I'm putting it together as one because it's within the same chapter. The first one I'd like to talk about is the amendment to the corridor overlay district. This is required, and I highlighted this in the staff report, there's two bullet points there. This is four dash four-three-one. What we're doing, what we're proposing here is to remove the front yard setback requirement on Cheyenne Street, south of Interstate ninety-four, and this is intended to accommodate the expansion of Cheyenne Street. So as we expanded that road, it's higher, or it's wider than we anticipated when we plotted out all the properties along Cheyenne Street. So when we plotted those properties, we were anticipating four lanes of road. When we added the six lanes, we needed more right-of-way, and so a lot then becomes less economically viable. So what we're doing here is proposing to remove that front yard setback in the overlay district, which is forty-five feet. It's pretty substantial. And in so doing that, we would require that they become, that their site plan gets reviewed by City Planning Commission and City Commission, so that, you know, we can reduce that setback, but maybe add some landscaping, what have you. The idea is that we're going to kind of build precedent for how that area develops. And we feel that that leaves some of those lots that are existing there to be still economically viable, and it also means that as we purchase right-of-way for a property like Dairy Queen, that they can still have that site there without having to have, like, some, you know, loss of economic value to that property. Because the way that our ordinance is built is if we were to take that forty extra feet from them, if it were to burn down or be destroyed greater than fifty percent, they then would not be able to rebuild that property on that site. So it's really important that we do this, and I think that this is our best approach. Mayor and I spent quite a bit of time looking at that, and this is our best kind of throw at it. I think it's a good, good option because we have the opportunity to review those sites. The second one is, as a result of the VFW sign, which we looked at a couple of weeks ago, our Cheyenne Street corridor overlay did not have anything to talk about signage, and so where we require a front yard setback of zero feet, if they have a sign protruding onto that right-of-way, it would be non-conforming. So we really needed to offer an ability for encroachment, and if encroachment were to occur, we would require an encroachment agreement to be approved by the City Commission. So those are our two proposed amendments. Planning Commission reviewed these and had a public hearing. We do not have a public hearing tonight because of the timing. We're planning to have a public hearing at the second reading, so tonight is just a proposal for our first reading.
Tim, it sounds like you came up with some very good solutions for both of those, so thank you for that. We definitely have to be fair to them people, so...
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions? Tim? No questions?
Make a motion, put it on first reading.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looks like motion passes.
Aye.
Aye, it was a aye, yes. Onto Mapleton Sewer Service. Chris.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Mapleton sent us a letter here about a week or two ago requesting us to start negotiations about taking their wastewater into our, into our wastewater system. They've, over the past several years, we've been working with them on a staff level about the availability of us to take their wastewater. They're looking about, in the future, about a hundred and ninety-one thousand gallons per day. With our connection to the City of Fargo, staff feels that's not going to be a very significant amount. In our future build-out, will we be able to have average of six-point-five million gallons a day in our connection, so it's not really a big issue. So this is a first start as we, as we, first step as we move forward with Mapleton, to ask you to allow us to start negotiating with Mapleton on a contract. Available for any...
Chris?
Yes?
Chris, is there a timetable at Mapleton looking at?
You know, they haven't identified the timetable. Right now, if they're in the planning stages, my guess, probably the earliest connection would be probably twenty nineteen. They would have to build a pipeline from the existing lagoon into our lift station, so that's, that's a good, you know, four, four miles plus. So it's probably some, some planning for them in the future.
Commissioner Thorsted?
A couple of questions. Number one, you say you have to negotiate. Are you going to, it's going to be a certain limits on it? I guess we wouldn't, I don't know if they're going to want limits or, you know, to limit their growth potential or tied in with our own needs and future use. I guess I, I don't know how much capacity we can say we're going to give of our capacity.
That's a very good question. Right now, the pipe that we're connecting, we're building in the City of Fargo, we're designing that for fourteen million gallons per day. So that's not only take our six-point, six-point-five million gallons per day that we're going to put out in the future, but it's also a peaking factor when we have a large rain and storm events, for all the inflow and infiltration comes into our, into our system. They've, they've requested us, they gave us the number right now of a hundred and ninety-one thousand gallons per day for twenty forty-three. So that's what they're looking for, their build-out in the future. We still, even though with, with that one ninety-one, I feel there's, there's additional building if they need to go over that, the hundred and ninety-one thousand. But I would feel comfortable with putting a, a cap on this, and know the same type of criteria they have to meet, the same discharge standards into our system, know the, all the industrial pretreatments that we have in our system already.
Yeah, I guess that was my other question, is the standards as far as what they're sending and whether they have the controls in place to make sure that those standards are being met, so we don't start accepting stuff that's unacceptable to Fargo.
We would have to have that in the system. That's the same thing, same domino effect. Fargo asked us to keep that in our contract with them, and we would ask that to be put into their contracts. We just keep passing that responsibility down. I should also mention that in our agreement with City of Fargo, that they would also have to approve this, this connection of Mapleton to our system, and there is a clause in our existing agreement to allow that.
Thanks.
Then, did you say they projected a hundred and ninety-one thousand gallons? How far out?
Twenty forty-three, I believe, is the number. So that's out their ways. They're looking at, at, you know, roughly around a hundred thousand gallons when they want to hook on, so...
Yeah, Chris and I have talked about this before, you guys, and in fact, there's been conversation a little bit already with the guys old at Mapleton, and then this is just more of a formalization of all this, because they've, they've been visiting with Fargo already also, so... And I think we're really, I think you're right, I think we're a ways away, because I think they're just trying to figure out how to get enough money to build a pipeline.
It's a long ways, a lot of money for a pipeline.
A lot of pipeline, so... But we can start the process. That way, they can plan from their direction and know, at least if they get here, we're willing to at least, you know, talk to them about that and have some more, I think it's part of the process, getting some more firm numbers for them. So, again, just start talking, and then we'll figure out where we need to be from there.
It won't be the first time you'll be seeing this.
No.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I think we need to, we need to work with our neighbors, and this is a good thing to do, so...
So we're just looking for approval to discuss with...
Want to vote on that?
Yeah, approval in negotiations.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Any opposed? No. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is provide progress update for sewer improvement project one-three-zero-eight. Dustin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Give me a second here while I connect. Hey, as you are aware, we have been working on a connection project to send our wastewater flows to Fargo. Over the past couple of months, most of the efforts have been into the final design stages, along with right-of-way acquisition, to obtain the necessary easements we need to put the pipe in the ground that will deliver the sewer over there. What I have up here today is, I use the same presentation that we delivered back in August of last year, just to kind of refresh your memory on, on where is this pipe going, and then also give you the updated information that'll be relevant to where we're at today. As you're aware, the existing lift station that is southwest of where Public Works is located, off Twelfth Avenue there, this is where our regional lift station is today that collects all of the wastewater and pumps it into the lagoons. We are basically going to take it from this lift station and now pump it over to a point in Fargo where they have, or are installing the infrastructure that will receive the wastewater. As Chris just mentioned, you know, we are designing for an average daily flow of six-and-a-half million gallons a day. And moving on here to the alternatives, we ended up selecting alternative A, which is basically to go straight north of where our regional lift station is. Trying to move the cursor here so you can see it, but the, the red square down here is where the lift station is. We're going to pump it straight north in between the existing lagoons and drain twenty-one, get up to Nineteenth Avenue, and then head east along Nineteenth Avenue until we get to this connection point. I'm going to skip through the other alternatives that we had reviewed last year. So when we presented in August last year, we basically identified what are the next steps. To recount these steps, we basically wanted to select an alternative in August, select a few alternatives to continue to evaluate. We did that. We selected alternatives A, B, and D. We evaluated those further, ultimately getting to recommending alternative A to move forward with. We got into the geotechnical evaluation process, which we received their final report in December. Survey, survey was a bit of a challenge out here, to get out here and collect all the survey data we needed. We needed agreements with each property owner to access their land, so that we could go on there with survey equipment and, and conduct everything. We sent out the initial requests to all the property owners in September last year, and we weren't able to actually complete the survey until the end of November. So it took a couple of months working with property owners just to get the ability to drive onto their property with four-wheelers and such, and, and collect the survey information that we needed. So from that point, then, we started getting into the final design. When we got into the final design, we felt comfortable moving forward then with the easement process. We had our alignment pretty well solidified, so we prepared our offer letters to each of the property owners. There's a, there's a couple of different, call it, levels of ownership out here. There's the land that is being farmed, so that has one approach to it, and then there are the residential properties out here, which has a different approach to it. With the farmland, we looked at what is the assessed value of that farmland. In general, that assessed value is about a thousand dollars an acre. However, we offered five thousand dollars an acre for this easement. With the residential properties, we again use the assessed land value, and in average, that assessed value is about twenty-three cents a square foot. We also have applied for the necessary permits from Southeast Cass Water Resource District and the Cass County Highway Department. Today, I'd say we're about ninety-five percent, ninety-five percent done with the, the design. We have a couple more things that we're finishing up within the, the lift station itself. We have to do some modifications to the plumbing in there so that we can adjust it to pump two-and-a-half miles over to Fargo. At this point, you know, initially, we were hoping to bid this project in March. Because of the land acquisition causing some delays, we anticipate pushing that bid date back. Now, this isn't a DOT project where they require you to have secured all, all the easements before proceeding into a bid. We do have the ability, if we wanted to, to bid this project prior to getting all the easements secured. However, we have plenty of time for construction. This project's really only going to take about ten weeks to construct, so we'd rather make sure we have all of our eggs in the basket before we start, you know, making omelets. So, we're going to delay the bid instead of proceeding.
Dustin, how long are you going to delay it, do you know?
Well, that's what we'll, I'll probably get into that in a slide or two, but if we do wait until we have all easements secured, and if we have to start a condemnation process, it's likely going to be two to three months before we could have all of those secured. Now, we might decide to proceed with a bid during that condemnation process if the attorneys are pretty confident that we're going to be successful, but I would say, at this point, it's looking like two to three months. So, May, June for a bid, which means construction wouldn't start until July.
Aye.
But again, if we have about a ten-week construction project, that still gives us plenty of time to be done by our target date of October.
Okay.
The current plans, I'll, I'll bring them up real quick. I'm not going to get into the detail or the weeds of these, but again, it, it just shows how we're going from the lift station to the north, up past the lagoons, and then east along Nineteenth Avenue, just to give you an idea of the amount of detail that we do have to this point. So what this map represents is all of the property owners in which we are coordinating an easement with. The magenta parcels up there are the property owners that are not cooperating as of today. And when I say not cooperating, it, it basically means, not only have they not accepted our offer, but they have either moved into a mode of hiring an attorney to represent them in, in negotiating with the city, or they are not willing to even entertain a counteroffer. So these are, in which you can see here is pretty much all of the properties, with the exception of the blue areas, which we don't need the easements. We've already obtained easements, or they are already public land. The green entities here represent the property owners that are cooperating at this point. So quite a few landowners that are, at this point, looking like we're going to have to go through a condemnation process. So what I've put up here in the green box is, at this point, staff is going to request from the city commission to move forward with the proceedings for a condemnation process. I believe what that is, and Sarah can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe at the next meeting then, the attorney would prepare resolutions for each property, which you would vote on individually to move forward with the eminent domain. So, that concludes the presentation and the update. Any questions?
Do you happen to know the nature of their discontent, why they don't want to cooperate? Is it, is it money or other? Did anyone let you survey on their way, it sounds?
Yeah, the, for the farmer, farm properties, it's a matter of money. One of the generic comments from the attorney that was hired by one of the farmers was that this is prime land that will develop in the future and should be well above $5,000 an acre. In that same letter that they wrote to the city, they also complained that we're obtaining an easement too far from the road in hopes of securing the remaining right-of-way for 19th Avenue to be expanded in the future into an urban road. So the comments are kind of contradictory in that they're complaining that we're trying to prepare ourselves for 19th becoming an urban street section, yet they're saying that the value of the land out there is such that this area will develop and urbanize. So, but from the standpoint of the homeowners, I think for the most part, again, money is one thing, but they're somewhat concerned with, you know, trees, other items that are on their property that would become damaged, and you know, I, I think we can work with them, but I think we're going to have a difficult time with the farm properties.
Are these the Reed Township people?
Yes, and they're a close network of people. One thing I didn't mention in here, back in October, we did have a neighborhood meeting at the Reed Township Hall.
Was there?
And Commissioner Hanson was there. Things looked pretty promising after that meeting. In fact, the attorney that is now representing a couple of these landowners was present at that meeting and told everybody at that meeting that, look, the city is going to have the, certainly has the right to come through here with a necessary utility improvement, and would have the right to survey the land to do so in preparation for that improvement. So after that meeting in October, we thought, you know, this is going to go fairly well. Of course, there's always one or two property owners that might cause a problem, but for the majority of them to kind of band together, and that's kind of the case. My understanding of talking with them is that they have now come together as a group, sharing each other's offers, and I think sharing each other's sentiment that they can get more money through a negotiation with the city. All of our offers were consistent. We used assessed values, which was a good thing. And I think to keep that consistent message, instead of getting into an individual negotiation with each owner, that is very subjective, we would recommend that, even though it comes with its own challenges and stigmas, we would recommend proceeding with the condemnation process now.
Sarah, do you have any concerns about this?
No.
Dustin, just a question. This line, could that be utilized up in that area some, someday if there ever was development, or would you have to put in a separate line anyway? Just wondering if that may, might have benefit for them someday or not?
It certainly can be used in the future, being that it'll be a forced main, not a gravity system that you can just tie into with another gravity system. You'll only be able to connect to it with another force main, and even that would present challenges based on the amount of flows that are coming through this thing. Any, any system that connects to it would have to have enough pumping capacity to be able to push through this particular line, so. It's possible. We haven't developed a master service plan to serve everything on this side of town, so I'm not sure, depending on how things develop and where things come together, not sure where lines will go, but the common message to people is, yes, it's possible, depending on how things develop. The city of Fargo is, has also hired a consultant to put together a rough master service plan for the areas east of Cheyenne River, all the way to 9th Street or 57th Street, and then from 19th Avenue up to where the railroad track crosses. So kind of this, this area, I don't show it all, but this area up in here. And we have not seen that layout yet, so.
We're not here to argue the merits, but I would assume getting rid of those lagoons will enhance a lot of property values up in that area.
Absolutely.
That one in your back pocket, Mayor?
I think it's unfortunate that we're at this stage already, especially after that meeting. I thought that meeting went really well. But I guess if that's the way they want to play the game, then that's the way we'll play the game, so. We'll make a recommendation that we go to condemnation.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Dustin. Next item is the Review Bid tab for Sewer Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District 1314.
Thanks again, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The improvement district here, 1314, is specifically for the development, and I believe this development is later on the agenda, but next to the new hockey facility on 32nd and Cheyenne, Todd Burning's development, known as Cheyenne 32. So what, I just, typically, I don't go through the plans when I recommend an award for a project, but I just wanted to briefly identify what are these city improvements that were bid. You can see here, it's hard to see on this map, but what we have here is Cheyenne Street is on this far east side, and here's 32nd Avenue. But the city has bid for an improvement project are the sewer water and storm sewer utilities, along with the paving in this parking area here in the drive aisle, so. We have, it's not a typical city street system, but through the developer's agreement, the city has agreed to include that paving with the improvement project that will be assessed out. So this will fully service the four or five buildings that will be built on this site, along with the plaza that's being planned in the middle. With that, we did open bids, pretty competitive in nature. We had several bidders. The low was Northern Improvement Company. We did have two alternates that we bid out here. Alternate A was for a standard street light that we typically put in our developments. Alternate B was a different lighting style that was recommended by the developer's architect. The cost difference was $20,000 to go to alternate B. The developer at this point asked us to move forward with the base bid, alternate A, but they have submitted some other ideas that we're looking into, getting cost information on. They anticipate a new decorative light would be half the cost of what alternate B was, so possibly adding $10,000 to this overall budget. We'll have to do that via change order in the future if we decide to upgrade to a more of a decorative lighting. So with that, I will recommend awarding to Northern Improvement Company for the base bid and alternate A. Again, that's the standard street light, with a bid of $756,473.60. Any questions?
No questions of Dustin?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dustin. To item nine on the agenda, Cheyenne 32 Business Incentive Review Approval, Matt.
That's your vice chair and commission. Please allow me a moment to get set up here. Thanks again. In the summer of 2017, the corner of Cheyenne 32, or Cheyenne Street and 32nd Avenue was placed into a TIF district. During that time and to now, the city, in conjunction with its developers, has been working on a project that includes mixed-use building and a plaza area that would go in the center. What you're looking at today is reviewing the business incentive agreement portion of that TIF district. And so what I'll do is run through some bullets of the agreement itself. The parking ramp, the first phase of the development, it will be greater than $45 million. That includes all three of the buildings that are privately constructed. The first constructed building will be well over 100,000 square feet, and the appraised value is $15 million. The building will be mixed-use and consistent with the vision of the comprehensive plan, or I might add the new comprehensive plan that's being presented and showing around town. The development group has been working on this project. They have several letters of intent already, a bar on the main floor, a running shoe store, as well as some other lifestyle-type businesses that would occupy the second floor of the space. They're going to try and focus on a concept called Turning Point on a Grand Forks, which is your kind of lifestyle-type businesses and centers. They think it'd play very well with the pavilion that's right outside the door. The layout of the development, the top of the page is north. That would be where the parking ramp is placed. And on the, what would be the east side along Cheyenne Street is the first building to be constructed. The second building that'll be constructed is on the south side along 32nd, and then the third is over by the hockey rink, which would be on the left side of what you're looking at there. Again, all of the buildings will be consistent, mixed-use type, and butt right up against the pavilion area. The square footage is of the first building are outlined here. As you can see, 109,000 square feet on the first building, made up of commercial and residential. These are some renderings of the plaza area with the first building. That first building is the one on your left, and the plaza's in the middle. We're looking to the south there. This is looking back toward the west. This would be what the front of the building looks like if you're driving along Cheyenne Street. This is looking toward the south at ground level. That's looking back to the north from the parking area. And that's looking through the pavilion area back toward the building. The intent here is that the base level businesses will be able to feed right out into the pavilion and interact with the space. There's another north picture, in case you didn't catch it. Also have apartments here, some renderings of the style, similar to what they have down on Cheyenne Street. They're looking for that kind of feel. Something to differentiate themselves from the rest of the market, so two stories and single stories as well. So from the business incentive agreement, originally, when we talked to you, the intent was we wanted to build the pavilion first. But as we worked together, we decided that that wouldn't be very practical to have a pavilion out there and nowhere for anyone to park, as well as nowhere for a tenant or resident to park as well. So with that, we switched a little bit. The ramp needs to go with building one, so that people are able to park there, plus we get that construction out of the way. The development group will construct the ramp at their own risk. They're going to take out a loan and, and build the ramp. And then when the ramp is constructed to our specifications, and they're completed with the first building, then the city, per the business incentive agreement, will come in and take over the ownership of that ramp. The bonds will be backed by special assessments as well, and those special assessments will be placed on their properties, theirs being the developers. The plaza will come then after the second building is built. And the EDC has reviewed this business incentive agreement and recommends their approval. And with that, the development group is represented here. Yep, you're back there, and I'm available for any questions.
Matt, just, I just want to make sure that the taxpayers that are watching this or will be hearing about this, that it's very clear that, in essence, they're not paying for this. So could you explain how building number one will pay for the ramp, and then two for number and so forth?
Correct. What we're doing is we're using the tax increments off of building one and building two to pay for the construction of the ramp. And so it's very similar to the TIF districts that we were foregoing, the tax assessed value for a period of time to pay for certain things. In this case, it's a ramp and a pavilion, similar to like roads in an industrial park.
So all the assessments will be within this area. The people out in Eagle Run in the wilds will not be paying assessments on this, correct?
Correct.
But I think we, we need to make that very clear as we move forward.
What's timetable, Matt, for the different structures?
The, they intend to start building one in June of 2018, hopefully, as well as the parking ramp would start in conjunction with that building as well, so that they're built together. And if I'm wrong, one of them can jump up and.
Completed in 2019 sometime.
Yep. The ramp, they say, is about an eight-month construction time period. The building is probably a full year, maybe a little better.
Are we projecting building three or at all? Any rough target dates?
Am I making this up, or?
Matt, is this completely separate from any of the school districts, the one with the ice hockey rink?
He has, I don't know.
Is it, is it separate from the school district and the ice hockey rink? Is it completely separate? Yes, Mayor?
I think, I don't know, somebody, I didn't hear him.
Did you hear me? Is it, is it, is this?
Is the pavilion separate, or the?
Is the whole entire project, I think, separate from the hockey arena and the school?
Yep.
With one clarification, if I may. The improvements that we are making within the district that you just authorized the contract for, some of those improvements will be assessed to the school's property, as they do benefit those. It's a small portion, but there is a portion there, along with the property that is to the north of this, which is at this point undeveloped, that is also included within the assessment district. I'm not sure how that plays into the TIF, but in terms of the improvement districts.
Okay.
They asked about building two and three.
Three and four.
Three and four.
Three and four, sorry.
Good thing we're looking in the future.
That's all right. Our intent is, Matt is correct, we're building one, you know, as soon as we can, June, July, whatever the timeline allows us to get rolling on that, and building two, that's the one to the south, the second. They're numbered different on the plans in there, but as far as consecutive order, first building's along Cheyenne, the second building is along 32nd Avenue. We want that to come right behind it, get those two done. Get those two done, you get the parking ramp, you get the plaza, everything is starting to function, and so that's really important. The third building, which would be right across the street from the hockey arena, want to take a deep breath on that? See where all the ideas come as we go through this process, who comes to the table. City's going to have ideas, we're going to have ideas. You know, deep breath isn't more than two or three years. I just don't want to go one, two, three, right in a row. I just want to give everybody a chance to, what we're working together to do is, hasn't been done in this area. It's been done all over the country, but not in this area, and so I think some other ideas will come across, and I think school district could have some ideas as well. You know, so, so I'll take our time there, and then building four will be at the end, and that's just kind of like the end cap of the parking ramp there, just to make sure that that corner gets dressed up. That was one of our partner's ideas, and I think it'll work out real well. It's kind of a similar configuration as to how Robert's Common is with the parking ramp downtown, how they're kind of wrapping it in the building, and that would be that end piece, so we'll work through that.
I like the idea of that, actually, what you said there, Todd, of leaving that last building kind of open and be creative.
Yeah. I mean, it's important we get enough tax capacity. Yeah, I mean, it's important we get enough tax capacity up and out of the ground.
Correct.
Right away, and so between those two buildings, you know, we're to be 30, 32 million plus, and that's right where we need to be to exist and move forward, and could be a little bit more actually, and then see what happens, just work on it as a team.
Okay.
That it?
Any other questions, Todd?
Thirty, what is the official name here? Because I see a sign that says the lights are coming, and I see Lights Lane, and I see Cheyenne 32, so...
Probably my fault. It's the lights at Cheyenne 32, and the lights is going to be more and more as it's referred to, and that's going to tie into what we do with the buildings and programming and things like that. I always refer to it as Cheyenne 32 because I don't know why I do, but I do, it's the lights, and that's what that sign says, and as we get ready to talk more about some of our tenants and some of our programming, you'll see more and more of that. Good question. Marketing gal will be glad you asked that, I'm sure she'll get in trouble. Another question?
Thanks Doug, thank you. All right, any other questions for Matt? You're an awesome project, you guys.
It looks very good, yes.
Are we voting on this one?
We need a...
Motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion passes, thank you Matt. Next item on the agenda, Tina.
Okay, in keeping with the theme, good evening Commissioners and Mayor on the phone. In keeping with the theme of the lights at Cheyenne 32, I was able to sit in quickly with Chris and a gentleman at KLJ for our underpass. They were picking the different colors, and they were showing me some renderings, and it is going to be really nice. It's going to be a beautiful underpass, well lit, well protected, security, it's going to be really nice. When they get more information, then we'll pull it forward so you guys can see it, but it'll all tie very, very nicely together with the buildings and the road, and I'm pretty excited about that as well.
Talking of walking, one, right?
Yep.
Walking one, not the one under the I-94.
No, sorry, just the under Cheyenne Street by 32nd.
It will hopefully tie in those two sides of the group of people.
Yes.
Which is what we want, so...
Yep, yep. It was a great idea, and I'm glad to see it coming alive, so it's wonderful. The next thing I want to do is, similar to what Rich said, today, this afternoon, we had a, they call it a hot wash, from the event yesterday, Mike was able to be there and Mark Wentz, and I just want to commend again, like he said, Dan and all his staff and the police department and public works and everybody, all the other entities that came together to make this go as well as it did. Pierre did a phenomenal job helping with the EOC. Pierre's comments to me were down structure in the way he handled the situation, getting his commands that are up and running right away, and then starting on the EOC and then Heath and everybody else jumping in, it was just, it was really, really nice to see. So it's proof that if we keep on working at this, that we're going to be a much stronger, better team, so we're really excited. And the next thing I want to do...
You know, to add to that, that was the first time I've been around anything like that, and I was impressed with how we ran, and we pointed out that we have opportunities today, which is good, we have to look at the good and the bad, so we get better next time, and hopefully there it never is a next time. But the other thing we got to realize, how fortunate we are, the good people we have involved in the city, I just want to add to that too, we've got a lot of good dedicated people, fire department, amazing what they did, very thankful for those guys that were out front, out there by those tanks all day long, as well as in the operations center, everybody did a great job, and it, I think it's just reflective of the city.
Absolutely, I agree with the Commissioner, that was, that was pretty amazing.
Yep, we have a lot to be proud of here, so I'm just very, very, very happy the way it went and how everybody worked together, and we're going to keep working on it. The next thing I want to do is, I had, we made a little bit of a change here, Tim Solberg is now our Director of Planning, and Larry Wile is our Director of Community Development, and that will allow Tim to be able to continue to learn from Larry and grow and develop in that position, but will also allow Larry to commit himself and his time to coming up with different ideas and ways to help our community develop, it ties in perfectly with our core infrastructure plan we have, and trying to find assistance for housing needs and people of different income levels and all those types of things. So we're really excited the path that that's going to take, and Larry will be able to provide more information as he gets moving into this, so the pieces are really working well together on that as well. Another thing we've been working on is, we met again, we always have a Thursday group that meets to talk about construction. We met last week and talked about formalizing it a little more to have it be, so that we can go through some of our processes, whether it's plat approval or plat review, fee and lieu, just following some of our structures and getting it together and getting something more organized, so that by the time we get everything to planning and zoning, if that's going to them first than you, or if it comes to you directly, you know that all staff has sat in a room, talked about it, police, fire, public works, administration, and that we've vetted the ideas, and we're all coming together with one answer, not three answers. So that's kind of, it's a work in progress, but that's going really well. For those of you that might be interested, the MECOT site on veterans, they're going to be, they're expanding, and so Tim brought me the list of renderings of what it is they plan on doing for screening and stuff, and if you'd like to see them, I have them in my office, but it's kind of nice the way they're working with planning and they're trying to actually make it look as good as you can, with lots of landscaping and the fencing and so forth. So that is in my office if you have any questions. Chris informed me just before I got up here that KLJ told him today that the Cheyenne Street project should be ready for bid, to be put out to bid for April 6th. So we'll be on track, and we'll keep moving, so that's, that's just wonderful. And the only other thing is, you know, when we talked about the easements, you know, when Dustin was going through some of those issues, we have ran into a lot of issues in the last year with people, whether it's a temporary or a permanent easement or whatever, it never used to be this difficult. It used to be, there were people that would just say, yeah, just go ahead, you know, they wouldn't even charge. Well, now we're finding people that are going double and triple their actual value of their land, and so the unfortunate part of that is, if we want to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, we can't do that. And so the vote you made tonight will help us, as hard as it is to do that, it's hard to turn around and tell the taxpayers, we paid somebody 10 times more than what their land is worth for just an easement, so I just thank you for that.
Good point, good point, well said.
Do you have any questions for me?
Just in two weeks, the planning, the long plan people are going to be here, right?
Yes, yes.
At the next commission meeting.
Yes, they should be at the next commission meeting, yep, and that plan's getting rolled out to the public now, and so we're anxious to get lots of feedback and have them here.
Sounds good.
All right.
Good, thank you.
Thank you Tina.
Yes, thank you very much.
Anything else, or a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you everyone.
Thanks, everybody.